I'll bring the tape back down. Something here came out of it?
That's to recharge the camera light.
Just hold that for a minute. Is it been calling on the phone?
More like we should be.
Hi, my name is Nicole Watson and I reside in the Fordham area of Bronx. And I would like to say that the conditions that I'm living in are horrible. Right now, my bathroom is not used. I have to sleep in other places. It's been almost two months. When this first happened, I was staying in hotels. That's what genetic. When work like this is being done in an apartment, normally the landlord would put you somewhere until they finish. So not only have they not placed us anywhere, they've left us with this disgusting conditions. My bathroom is, you can't use it. So I have to, now that I have no more money to stay in hotels, I have to sleep other places so that way I can be clean before I go to work because I do work every day. I'm educated, I have a bachelor's degree, I have done a video thing. So it's not like, I don't know what to say about, you know, some of the comments I've heard from the building manager saying, you know, basically, we don't matter and we should just accept what they're giving us. And it's not acceptable and it's not livable. Also, I would like to, I've been to that apartment since 1988. And mostly the work in that apartment, we've done it. We've done the work, we've put the money in. And now we just don't have the money to continue to pour into the apartment. So we need the landlord to fix it and not just patch it up. And it's horrible. If work needs to be done in a zoo, they can fix it properly for an animal. And I don't know, they deserve proper work. But if there's work in a zoo for an animal, that work will be tip-top and shit. But for us humans, they just patch it up. It's like just give it to robot testing, it will be fine. No, it won't be. We need better work, we need it done and not just left. I would like to use my kitchen and my bathroom. I would like to stop staying in my rent's house. They're getting tired of me. They're going to ask me to pay rent. I'm gonna have two rents to pay, mine and my friend's. They're getting tired of me. And I would like to say, please, roll the rent back or freeze us, something. But please stop giving these landlords money that they don't deserve.
Good evening. I apologize because I have a little cold, so I hope you can hear me. Rebecca? Great, great. My name is Nesper Barina. I'm the Housing and Constituent Services Director for 700 Vicinchaco. He sends his regards and apologies because he's actually on the altar right now. So unfortunately, he can't be here tonight, but I'm sure he would be here if he was in the district. So he has prepared a testimony. I will read it if you give me a chance to pop it up. Yes, so it begins like this. It says, "Almost," it says, "almost every constituent that walks through the doors of my district office comes to us seeking assistance with housing matters. Although every situation is unique, I can't help but notice a common and consistent pattern. First, my constituents are frustrated. Frustrated due to the challenges it faces when 50% or more of their income goes to paying their monthly rent. When constant and confusing non-rent decharges are added to their rent statements for things like air conditioners, washing machines, and legal fees. Frustrated because every year, the Guide Alliance Board habitually votes on rent increases for regulated housing in the face of increasing economic hardship. Second, my constituents are angry. Angry due to dealing with unscrupulous, excuse me, angry due to dealing with unscrupulous landlords and their management partners who are unwilling to make adequate and quality repairs and maintenance to their home disabilities. As a consequence, my constituents endure not only economic hardships, but also suffer through substantial living conditions which impact their quality of life. And third, my constituents are disappointed. Disappointed when I seem taken to court by their landlords and forced to navigate a complicated system without representation, when over 90% of their landlords have lawyers that represent them. When hardworking families are using 50% and up to 70% of their earnings to pay their rent, it creates roadblocks for achieving economic mobility. When landlords and management companies fail to provide the required level of care of their tenants, it creates instability. When tenants are being taken to court for their inability to pay their rent while living in living conditions without any legal representation, it creates a loss of hope in society. A rent freeze could not come at a better moment for us, given the economic and social hardships we are experiencing as a community. Compounded with the continuous rent hikes we have seen in the past 40 years, I ask that the board write us with the relief that we so desperately need. I am here in solidarity with my neighbors. Our struggle is real and our voice is clear. We respectfully urge that board vote yes to the rent freeze. It frees which will put us on the path towards stability and sustainability.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Shanika Charles and I also live at 2543 De Catorado, Bronx. These are my neighbors, my family, my friends who all came, a cocktail member, to speak tonight on some really important issues. My landlord is, well, we go by the name of Realty Crown at times and sometimes it's 2543 LLC and a mom that is a city attorney or which is how they might want to use that day. But the main issue, the main issues are persistent amongst all of the testimonies that was heard here tonight. The living conditions are deplorable and deplorable to the point where there is no level of happiness in your home. When you're done every day and I work all day, every day, I have 25 hours a day, eight days a week, in addition to raising my sleeping four-year-olds who came to testify, but she fell asleep about how she can't use her bathroom. One thing is clear, they don't deserve a rent freeze. My pay didn't go up, my apartment didn't get bigger, my neighbors are suffering. I have women in my building who are taking care of their mothers who watch me grow up through their great-great-grandmothers and they're climbing downstairs to open the door to their neighbors because their intercom doesn't work. We are choosing between milk and cereal at this point. And the last one is that you need a milk for your cereal. We are making sacrifices and compromises to afford $1,200 a month rent, cash-paying tenants. And every single month I have to look that little girl in her eyes and tell her one word thing that we cannot do that much. When I have to make a decision between whether or not I get dinner for that night, sneakers for her feet, or something to eat for myself, I just want to point out that this suitcase is for my graduation, my undergrad graduation. I graduated in 2001. Understand that this is real. Please understand that nine of you, that this goes beyond anything that you have ever seen before. We are holding on you, we are begging you, we are asking you, we are desperately coming to your faces and saying, this is who we are. We cannot afford for somebody who does not even visit the conditions that we live in to tell us we can afford another $150 a month, $200 a month. In some cases, $300 or $400 a month. Where is this money gonna come from? I'm in two seconds from being on the street. I hold it together well because that's how my mama raised me. But the reality of it is that I can't afford it. I cannot afford it. What I'm asking you today is to consider, actually, I think I'm demanding that a vote be cast in a unanimous voice of sincerity and appreciation for our struggles, which is the majority of us. Y'all guys deserve to be on the streets. I'm not gonna talk about the conditions in my apartment a little bit deplorable because everybody in here has had a story about their apartment and mine is the same. Since May 12th, we have not been able to use our bathroom. I have to wash my daughter somewhere, bring her back out in the night air. Said to get dressed for bed. She's been six since Friday, to school on Monday and Tuesday. And I can almost guarantee you that they taught something she needed to learn over those two days. All I'm saying is, we've got council people here, we've got assembly people here. We need this rent, this rent freeze. It ain't a joke, it's something real and it's something to think about. Because everybody's sitting up there, almost everybody out here is one dollar away from being in a place where they know they don't have to. We need a rent freeze. Sorry, I'm a little worried, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry for my English because I'm from Africa. So I'm very happy to see you guys here. I live in 1356 Sierra Avenue. 16 years, six months. You was complaining about two landlords passed. But I think the whole city, the landlords we have now, I don't think anybody have that kind of land. They don't fix nothing, they don't do nothing. And right now, I make an appointment in the bank to go get all my debts I paid them every month to get in front of it because I feel like they change bill two times a month. Because we have a bunch of kids like what everybody's saying here. I get up on my bed, 5:04, 5:45, take each hour, ready to go work, I dress ambulance, getting leave on 6:10, starting at 7:00, finish at like almost 8:00, 7:45. Right? Because of my apartment, my young kids. And this morning, I have to go, I have a problem with five months of service. You see? Five is now, next December 12th, I'm on the 66. But I don't think you think about start working because I have fun. I don't have that income to sit home to take care of this kind of fun. Okay, for that company, they don't have no time, they take their landlord to the court. They everything what they want to do. If they said that if it's something, they come and check the apartment, they tell them to fix it. They fix little, they go. They're like, you know, you mark what they don't fix. One time, two times, they don't fix, they don't do anything, nothing. Nothing. And I think, I'm begging you guys, if you guys are the kids, if you hear leaders, I think, you need to live. You're gonna forgive million people and you take out 1,000 people there, you live there. And forget about the 99,900 people someday. I don't think, I don't think that person is a lead. If you guys, you're gonna know you guys are leaders, as far as you guys take it, try to come here, our own neighborhood, to listen to us, to help us, I believe. I beg you guys, if you guys go, you're gonna make changes on the problem they are facing like a couple of years ago. You guys, you're gonna see new things which is gonna make us a little bit happy, I think so, with our families. The apartment, I think one of my kids didn't have a lead pet. People are like, oh, two of them, I said, no. I wanna wait, I tried. Tried for the medical system, the fish tank, I don't see anything positive, yeah.
Sir, I so appreciate your testimony. We have so many more people and thank you.
Yeah, but please, please, what it must be, what that landlord is saying.
And good evening, everyone. I was here, I want to explain our situation. We have been dealing with predatory landlords for quite some time in my building. So far, we have four come through. Raise rents, do no repairs, and the building falls completely into disrepair. The next one comes in, does the same thing, and it's repetitive. They don't do any fixing, any repairs, but they do raise the rents. The rent obviously gets raised and it's sipping, okay? Our doors are left open, the side gates are left open. There was a shootout from our own roof on May 1st. Recently, a tenant on the sixth floor got held up. We have homeless people coming into our building and sleeping in our hallways. Drug dealers coming in, doing drug transactions. We're constantly calling, by the time the 44th precinct gets to our building, of course, the transaction is done, they're gone. Nobody, you call the management, Park Ash LLC is our current management. They don't pick up the phone. If they do, they get smart with you and they hang the phone back up. Today, today, I was in court. It seems that every time a new management takes over our building, they come out with all these thousands of dollars that's owed to them. Park Ash has only had our building less than two and a half months. Within the first two weeks, we received three-day eviction notices. Everybody's in the building, three-day eviction notices. Outrageous. Then came the five-day eviction notice, then came the court documents. You call, I sent certified letters and called. Mr. Park Ash, I finally got him one time. He immediately said, oh, he can't talk to me, you'll see me in court. The court paper came in. I looked on my documentation, I was fortunate that I keyed my receipts for every, every year, okay? And of course, he lost, I won. He has to do repairs in my, in my apartment according to the court. He has still the 27th to do it. But there were other people there that were not as fortunate because they don't have the receipts of five, six, seven years ago. He's, he's looking back into their accounts and stuff from back years ago and stuff to hold receipts that long. It's ridiculous. It's really ridiculous, but yet he wants to raise the rent. There's a lady on the first floor who showed me her one-bedroom apartment and she's paying $1,400, $1,400 for one bedroom. She's struggling. You know, I feel not only for me, but also for the senior citizens in my building. For this single mother, single father to the raising kids, something needs to be done. Please have consideration, have a heart. Think of your own family and friends that may be going through what we're going through. Have compassion, 0% increase.
Grace Lovio, Alfredo Lee, Maria Wester.
Good evening. My name's Grace Lovio and I'm not with Casa, but that's okay. I live in the northeast Bronx, I don't know if my address is really important, but I'm in the northeast Bronx. I've been living there since, in the building since 1969 when we were moved over there by our then landlord, who inherited the building from the father. The building, you know, back then, we had a relationship with our landlord. We knew, he knew all the tenants. He, they called him. Their repairs, when they were done, lasted for years, 10 more years. I've been living in my apartment for 32 years, just about. And I wouldn't, I don't know who the landlord is. Once he sold the apartment building, it went on, somebody bought it. Then a couple of years later, they sold it, somebody else. Now it's, you know, my landlord is 2766 Florence LLC, that's all I know. I don't know, they seem to be shells so that they can hide. But I represent the twins, I'm in between. I am not in, I don't have any small children, I'm a grandmother. But I'm not in my 60s yet, I'm almost there. So I'm in between. I'm on, and I worked on my life and I became disabled. I didn't plan on being disabled, but I am, so I'm on a fixed income. I guess food stamps, but that, that, those went out before, they already went out. So I have to plan on seeing, going to food shelters. I have to pay Con Ed, you know, have a phone. I need transportation to get to my doctor's appointments back and forth. And also, you know, if clothes, I was able to buy a little pair of sneakers. But, and hey, let's have, yeah. And I can't, I have clothes that are vintage, you guys can look for them. I have, but I can't fit into them, they're a little bit heavy now, but. But my rent just was going up to over 800, over 820. And I finally got my, my, my jury, my disabled, my decreased exemption. I was finally approved of that, but why, why do I have to wait to get to be disabled? Elderly people don't, can't get help, there's grief for them, there's grief for disabled. But there's people that don't, I don't qualify in front of the help, like to get food or anything like that. If I didn't get this exemption and I didn't have to go over with that increase, I do have to, right now, decide what do I have to buy that's gonna feed me and I have three grandchildren that sort of kind of little me, but they don't, but they do. So I would really ask that you at least freeze the rent and also in your Guide Alliance, if you can change them so that you guys are no longer here.
We don't have that authority. And thank you so much for your testimony.
Just so we throw it out there so that they can, the next board that comes in doesn't get hung up by the landlords and they then don't normally increase.
I'm going to begin with Casa. We have a tenant here that's disabled and she has leave now, so she wanted to see if she could testify now.
I think after her testimony, we're gonna have to take a five-day break because Mark was mad and I don't know if it was.
Swore to pull hard.
And taking down every word for the last, how many hours he's been breaking.
That's a serious thing, that's a difficult thing to go mind. Right, and there's also two of the tenants that have been here since 5:30 from Lafayette, Ohio. And they wanted to know why they had to be called in, Sandra or Fran, can you check?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Gloria Montesca. I live in 1460 in Annapolis. I see myself like a dollar sign for the ceiling. Because it's a shame that I see it's willing to pay more money for a shelter than to control the rent. Most people on the shelter, they don't want to be in a shelter. They want a safe place, home and family. And it's a shame how you see this, 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 about this being. This is supposed to be on the news everywhere, and you're supposed to say it. I've been stressed with poor people. We are tired of abuse. We are tax payer, we are poor, we are human too. We deserve to have a decent place. But we don't deserve to have rocks by the ladder. But we don't deserve to live in a place that you feel like you are, oh, I need some place to live, I'm afraid. Like you have a job, you're not getting a raise, but you're ready to guess what? We're tired. We are tired of eating crumbs from the table that the lenders and the owners feeling behind. It's a shame, we're here today because we're freedom of our freedoms. And the lenders are making prison because they're thinking prison. And we are still being pushed through a wall. And in front of us who have a dog that's lying. We're putting us in a position that we don't know. We're putting us, you guys, we're in a place that we don't know. Because if you want me to increase, must have my condition. And that means our family stability. That means our children stability. That means our mental health. That means our children mental health. And you don't care.
Omar Kinnali, Luis Ramos, Grace Lovio.
I'm sorry for my English because I'm from Africa. So I'm very happy to see you guys here. I live in 1356 Sierra Avenue. 16 years, six months. You was complaining about two landlords passed. But I think the whole city, the landlords we have now, I don't think anybody have that kind of land. They don't fix nothing, they don't do nothing. And right now, I make an appointment in the bank to go get all my debts I paid them every month to get in front of it because I feel like they change bill two times a month. Because we have a bunch of kids like what everybody's saying here. I get up on my bed, 5:04, 5:45, take each hour, ready to go work, I dress ambulance, getting leave on 6:10, starting at 7:00, finish at like almost 8:00, 7:45. six thirty, starting at seven o'clock, finish at like almost eight o'clock, seven forty-five. Right? Because of my family. My young kids. And this morning, I have to go buy, I have a problem with five hundred sixty. You see? But it's now, next December 12th, I'm in sixty-six. But I don't think you think about start working because I have fun, I have a part of income to sit home, take care of this kind of fun. Okay, for that condition, they don't have no time. They take their landlord to the court. They everything what they want to do. If they send them, if they come down, they come and check the apartment, they tell them to fix it. They fix little thing, they go. They like you, you mark what they don't fix. One time, two times, they don't fix it. They don't do anything. Nothing. Nothing. And I think, I'm begging you guys, if you guys are a people, if you hear leaders, I think, you need to live. You're going to forget one million people. And you take out 1,000 people there, you live there. And forget about the 99,900 people over there. I don't think, I don't think that person is a leader. If you guys, you better know you guys are a leader, as far as you guys second chance to come here, our own neighborhood, to listen to us, to help us, I believe, I beg you guys, if you guys go, you're gonna make a change on the problem we are facing like a couple of years ago. You guys, you're gonna see new things, which is gonna make us a little bit happier, I think so, with our families. The apartment I live, I think one of my kids didn't have a lead pet. People are like, "Oh, two of them?" I say, "No." I'm on a wait, I tried. Tried for the medical system, it was stuck. I don't see anything positive. Yeah.
Sir, I so appreciate your testimony. We have so many more people and it's incredible.
Yeah, but please, please. What the landlord only say?
Grace Lofia.
Good evening. My name's Luis Ramos. I reside at 1530 Sheraton Avenue in the Bronx. And good evening everyone. Who's here?
Good evening.
I will explain our situation. We have been dealing with predatory landlords for quite some time in my building. So far, we had four come through, raise rents, do no repairs, and the building falls completely into disrepair. The next one comes in, does the same thing, and it's repetitive. They don't do any fixing, any repairs, but they do raise the rents. The rents obviously gets raised, and it's sipping in, okay? Our doors are left open, the side gates are left open. There was a shootout from our own roof on May 1st. Recently, a tenant on the sixth floor got held up. We have homeless people coming into our building and sleeping in our hallways. Drug dealers coming in, doing drug transactions. We're constantly calling. By the time the 44th precinct gets to our building, of course, the transaction is done, they're gone. Nobody. You call the management, Park Ash LLC is our current management. They don't pick up the phone. If they do, they get smart with you and they hang the phone back up. Today, today, I was in court. It seems that every time a new management takes over our building, they come out with all these thousands of dollars that's owed to them. Park Ash has only had our building less than two and a half months. Within the first two weeks, we received three-day eviction notices. Everybody's in the building, three-day eviction notices. Outrageous. Then came the five-day eviction notice, then came the court documents. You called, I sent certified letters and called. Mr. Park Ash, I finally got him one time. He immediately said, "Oh, he can't talk to me, he'll see me in court." The court paper came in. I looked on my documentation, I was fortunate that I keyed my receipts for every, every year, okay? And of course, he lost, I won. He has to do repairs in my, in my apartment according to the court. He has still the 27 to do it. But there were other people there that were not as fortunate because they don't have the receipts of five, six, seven years ago. He's, he's looking back into their accounts and stuff from back years ago and especially people that hold receipts that long. It's ridiculous. It's really ridiculous, but yet he wants to raise the rents. There's a lady on the first floor who showed me her one-bedroom apartment, and she's paying $1,400. $1,400 for one bedroom. She's struggling. You know, I feel not only for me, but also for the senior citizens in my building. But he's a single mother, single father to the raising kids. Something needs to be done. Please have consideration, have a heart. Think of your own family and friends that may be going through a difficult road. Have compassion. Zero percent increase.
Well done. Grace Lofia, Alfredo Lee, Maria Wester.
Good evening. My name's Grace Lofia, and I'm not with Casa, but that's okay. I live in the Northeast Bronx. I'm on my address, it's really important, but I'm in the Northeast Bronx. I've been living there since, in the building since 1969, when we were moved over there by our then landlord for his building from the father. The building, you know, back then, we had a relationship with our landlord. We knew, he knew all the tenants. They called him. Their repairs, when they were done, lasted for years, ten or more years. I've been living in my apartment for 32 years, just about. And I wouldn't, I don't know who the landlord is. Once he sold the apartment, the building, it went on. Somebody bought it, then a couple of years later, they sold it, somebody else. Now it's, you know, my landlord is 2766 Borns LLC. That's all I know. I don't know. They seem to be shells so that they can hide something. But I'm in between. I'm in between. I'm not in, I don't have any small children, I'm a grandmother, but I'm not in my 60s yet. I'm almost there. So I'm in between. I'm on, and I worked on my life, and I became disabled. I didn't plan on being disabled, but I am. So I'm on a fixed income. I guess food stamps, but that, that, those were now before, they already went out. So I have to plan on seeing, going to food shelters. I have to pay coned, you know, have a half ton, half ton of phone. I need transportation to get to my doctor's appointments back and forth. And also, you know, give clothes. I was able to buy a little pair of sneakers. But, and hey, let's have to, yeah. And, and I, I can't, I have clothes that are vintage, that I can look for. I have, but I can't fit into them. They're a little heavy now, but. But my rent just, we've gone up to over 800, over 820. And I finally got my, my, my jury, my disabled, my decreased exemption from my, I was finally approved of that. But why, why do I have to wait to get to be disabled? There have elderly people don't, can't get help. There's grief for them, there's grief for disabled. But there's people that don't, I don't qualify for any other help, like to get food or anything like that. If I didn't get this exemption, and I didn't have to go over with that increase, I do have to, right now, decide what I have to buy that's gonna feed me, and I have three grandchildren that sort of kind of little me, but they don't. But they do. And so I would really, and I ask that you at least freeze the rent, and also, in your guidelines, if you can change them so that when you guys are no longer here, we don't have to worry.
And thank you so much for your testimony.
Just to throw it out there so that they can, the next board that comes in doesn't get helped up by the landlords and they then don't, they don't have to worry.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I'm gonna begin with Casa. We have a tenant here that's disabled, and she has leave now, so she wanted to see if she could testify.
I think after her testimony, we're gonna have to take a five-day break because Mark is back. I don't know if it was.
Yeah, you swore to the board.
And taking down every word for the last, how many hours, it's a break.
That's a fair decision because they go mind, right? And there's also two of the tenants that have been here since 5:30 from Lafayette, Ohio. And they wanted to know why they had to be called in, Sandra or Graham, can you check?
I'm warning for people to not.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Gloria Montes. I live in 1466 in Annapolis. I see myself like a dollar sign for a thief. Because it's a shame that I see it's willing to pay more money for a shelter than to control the rent. Most people on the shelter, they don't want to be in a shelter. They want a safe place, homeless family. And it's a shame how you see this, yes, it hit the first time about this beat. It's supposed to be on the news everywhere, and you're supposed to stop saying it. I've been stressed with the poor people. We are tired of the abuse. We are a tax payer. We are poor. We are human too. We deserve to have a decent place for me, but we don't deserve to have rocks by the ladder. But we don't deserve to live in a place that you feel like you are, oh, at least have a place to live, or have a break, like you have a job. You're not even ready, but you're ready to guess what? We tired. We are tired of eating from the table, that the ladders and the water street is behind. It's a shame. We are here today because we don't have a business. And the ladders are on, and the priest goes, and the thief goes, and we are still being pushed through a wall. And in front of us who have a dog that's lying. We're putting us in a position that we don't know. We're putting us, you guys, for a place that we don't know. Because if you from without a priest, must have my position. And that means our family estabilité. That means our children estabilité. That means our mental health. That means our children mental health, and you don't care. I don't care.